Recording in progress.
What's our, what's our friend gonna speak on tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, we pride ourselves that I'm starting on time. I would like to call the Milton Planning Commission meeting of March 27th, 2024 to order. This is a regular meeting of the City of Milton Planning Commission. I am Chair Judy Byrd. This is a seven-member commission appointed by the City of Milton Mayor and City Council, created for the purpose of holding public hearings and making recommendations on rezonings, use permits, concurrent variance applications, comprehensive land use plans, and plan map and other replated plans, as well as amendments to the zoning ordinance. In attendance tonight, we have Vic Jones, Sumit Shaw, Brian McNeese, Vice Chair Kurt Nolte, Fred Edwards, and Trey James, as well as various members of the staff. We have a full quorum tonight. Before I get into the next section regarding our agenda and some of the orders, how many people are here for the Rosemary location on Birmingham Highway? By show of hands, okay? How many people for Blakely Manor on Freemanville? Okay? How many on the Crab Apple Market North Residential? Okay. As such, then, I would like to propose that the public com- Is anybody here to make a general public comment? As opposed to a specific topic? What I would like to then propose for the agenda is that we move general public comment after the staff update on Blakely Manor, so you can hear the update and then make comment. So that will be considered a general public comment. So with that changed to the agenda, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I move to amend the agenda for this evening, moving general comment to behind the the Blakely Manor.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So with that in mind, the petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the published-
Just for the sake of the record, can we call for any opposed and announced-
Oh, any opposed?
Announced that it was unanimous.
Unanimously approve the agenda.
Thank you.
The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the published agenda as just amendment. I'd like to acquaint you with some of the rules of the procedures of this meeting, since I think for some of you, it is your first meeting. The applicant in although speaking in support of an application, that doesn't apply here, that's recent. Let me jump to preliminary plots. So the, just to remind you, the Planning Commission is tasked by the city subdivision ordinance to conduct a public hearing on proposed preliminary plots that had been found to be incomplete by the Community Development Department. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission is required to review the proposed preliminary plant and provide comments and make recommendations regarding the plant to the Community Development Director. The Planning Commission does not approve or reject the proposed preliminary plot, but merely provides comments or recommendations based on the public hearing and the Planning Commission's review of the preliminary plot. Okay. Everyone, before we get to the agenda, if you would like to speak, if you would fill out a yellow card and get it to either Ms. Robin or Ms. Emily.
Judy, can you also go ahead and read the rules for the speaking? I think I mislabeled that when I gave you the script earlier, just the petitions part, because that will apply to the Rosemary plot tonight.
Oh, so the, the time limit, I mean?
Correct.
So that, just, you may want to jot down your comments and thoughts also, because the time is limited to two minutes per person. Not to exceed 14 minutes has been in our bylaws for quite some time. So at the discretion of the Commission, we can extend that, but if you would please be prepared with your comments. Okay. First on the agenda is consideration of the minutes. I did have one change because it was relevant for last meeting. On the minutes, the minutes did not, were not reflected in the order, they were actually taken. So I'd like to propose that we amend the minutes to move the item on old business that was moved forward, but to have it in the minutes in the order that it occurred, which was before the election of the officers. So I make a motion for that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of the minutes passes unanimously. So we are now moving to the consideration of the preliminary plot for Rosemary, located at 12780 Birmingham Highway by Waterford Homes. Has everyone that wants to speak on that submitted their yellow comment card? Great. The applicant has requested to subdivide the T2-zoned parcel into nine single-family detached home lots on 16.01 acres with a density of 0.56 units per acre. Tracy, are you up with a presentation from staff?
Absolutely. Good evening. How is everyone?
Great.
Great. Okay, so the preliminary plot tonight for Rosemary is before you. It is located at 12780 Birmingham Highway, Zone T2. The proposed preliminary plot does propose to subdivide the T2 parcel into nine single-family detached homes on 16.01 acres for a density of .56 units per acre. On the screen to the right is the location map. So to recap, the proposed subject site for Rosemary is located west of Northwestern Middle School. It's on Birmingham Highway, just south of Kensington Farms, and north of the Brayburn neighborhood, the Milton Community Church, and overall, just north of the roundabout at Heritage Walk. The site plan for Rosemary delineates the 16 acres. It does show the nine single-family lots. Lot ranges in size from one acre to 4.30 acres. There is, it's proposed to be a private gated entrance, a private 44-foot right-of-way. They are proposing future interparcial access to the lot on the north at the entrance. And they, their preliminary hydro study has proposed for an underground stormwater detention pond, and that's delineated here in this common area, as well as a 20-foot drainage easements with enhanced wells, and that's in the dashed shaded area at the rear of lots one through seven. The existing topo map does not appear to be any steep slopes involved. And the documents and plots that have been submitted to Community Development do meet the requirements as per city code and for the development of this site. And staff is available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? I hear a lot of shuffling and ruffling. I do have a couple of questions. One, is this inside or outside the urban growth boundary? It's outside.
Outside.
And I did not see any sidewalks shown? Are there any sidewalks? And I just couldn't see them.
There are no sidewalks proposed at this time. There's not any proposed interior. There would be, I'm sorry, there would be a sidewalk along Birmingham Highway because of its proximity to the school and to the park across the street.
The sidewalks are determined by many factors that's embedded in what was the subdivision regulation. So based upon the parameters, it's not required to have internal sidewalks.
And I did notice that the notes denoted a gate, but I did not see it on the schematic with a proper setback. Is a, is a gate proposed or not?
A gate will be proposed. There will be, the design of that, the proper setbacks will be looked at at LDP.
And is there enough space between that driveway and the street for the gate access and turnaround?
Yes, we believe so.
Okay.
To that, to that point, and maybe to the developer's question, but off of Birmingham Highway, will there be a egress before or in after?
Like a decelerated lane or anything? There will not be. That's not proposed right now. So Birmingham Highway is controlled by GDOT, so state, so it's a state route. So at this time, I do not think that there is a proposed deceleration lane required for this development.
Well, I guess then I have to ask later on about where the school bus is gonna be parking for letting the children get on and off.
That's a, that's a question that we will consult with the developer about.
Tracy, another question from me. Is this, it's T2, is this subject to rural viewshed?
This would not be subject to rural viewshed.
Because it's T2, not the rural overlay. Any other further comments before we open it up for public comment?
Or do you want, do you want to have the applicant come and speak?
Aren't they usually part of public comment? Great. And if you want to make a comment, there's a yellow card to fill out. So
We could have Drew come now.
Okay, so if we go ahead and have the applicant present?
Great, great.
Thank you guys. Drew Cloud, 2423 Willwood Drive in Brookhaven. Really appreciate you guys' time and attention to this project. We also have our senior engineer, Bill, here as well, if there's any technical engineering questions that he may be better suited to answer. As you can see, it's a, proposed to be a nine-home site community. The, we have designed the home sites so that seven out of the nine will accommodate a walkout condition from the main level to the backyard and pool area. The topography was pretty flat and sort of lent itself to that, other than lots six and seven in back. We've got underground detention. We've had, I want to thank the city staff. They've been tremendous. We've had-
Excuse me, can you pull your microphone up?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. The, the staff, we've had many, many iterations of this site plan, and they've been extremely helpful. We've had a lot of meetings, multiple meetings, with the city engineer as well as staff about different, different challenges on the site. It's a small site, but it's more complicated than it probably looks. And yeah, we think this is gonna be a really fantastic community. 20 years ago, as of a couple of weeks ago, my mother, Gail Cloud, lost her battle with ovarian cancer. The, the street is proposed to be called Gail Lane after her. The entrance monument will, one will say Rosemary, the other, you know, established 2024 with a small plaque that says, "In loving memory of Gail Cloud." And so the, the stakes were already, I guess, pretty high on this because of the, the price point of the, the land and the construction of these homes. But sort of doing it in her honor, building homes that are worthy of her, sort of raises the level. And I think you guys are gonna be very, very proud to see some really spectacular homes that everyone who is a part of Milton can be proud of in such a high-profile location, sort of in city center. We are also building a project known as Milton Towns on Brannion Circle, right around the corner. That's been a great project. We, we built extensively in Crab Apple Station, one of the first communities in downtown Crab Apple. I went to Chattahoochee High School. My dad still lives in Double Gate, just down the road. So we're members of this community and really appreciate everyone's time and attention. And I will leave it for any questions that you guys have.
How many public, how many public comment cards do we have?
Two.
Two. Do you'd like to call public comment?
William Anderson.
And if you would, if, I believe you've spoken before. When you do come up, please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is William Anderson. I live at 565 Kensington Farms Drive, and we are adjacent to the wooded area that runs up through Rosemary. I'm here to talk about a history lesson. The history lesson is what happened with Brayburn and John Whelan. As you know, the City of Milton was formed in 2006. The elected officials came on board in October of 2007. Prior to City Council taking over, we were unincorporated Fulton County. Mr. Whelan came in and clear-cut, and I say clear-cut, 64 acres, and you can see it out here. Mr. Whelan then proceeded without permits to put dams over the creeks. They have three dams there, unpermitted dams. Mr. Whelan furthermore polluted the creeks. We are still, still dealing with pollution coming down the stream. Mr. Whelan also authorized the drilling of a well, even though he was under a stop-work order. He got fined for that. But as is typically the case, fines get rolled into the price of a house. So all I'm asking is for the City Council and the Planning Commission and everybody involved, you better be on your toes, because we've had enough of pollution and work being done on land without permits. And just because somebody is a big wheel in Atlanta named John Whelan doesn't excuse what happened here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Hub Kelch.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Hub Kelch. I live at 325 Petersford Way in Kensington Farms. Each day, there's a safety hazard on our street, that is to say Birmingham Highway, when more cars than can possibly get into the high school are arriving and commuters are passing by. It's a safety hazard in that an emergency vehicle, a fire truck, an ambulance, could not get into Kensington Farms, for example. My only point is that if we build more houses, each one of them is gonna have two or three cars, and we make that problem even more dangerous for the people who live there. Thanks for the opportunity to talk.
Any further questions for the applicant or staff? Or any comments?
I guess I have, I have one question. On the drawings, it says there's a future interparcial access, which is down towards the, almost the flag portion of this larger lot. Is that, is there gonna be, I mean, are there any thoughts? Or is there any, what's going in there that would need some interconnected?
So the lot to the north is proposed, the proposal is that a single-family lot would be in that. They would have access to that lot from the Rosemary subdivision. The creek, even though on this site plan, we don't have the topo extending to the area that's not within this boundary, the creek does extend to that area. So pretty much the house location would be sort of down closer to the entrance for that lot on the north side.
So that would prevent a curb cut off of Birmingham Highway?
That's correct. That's correct. That lot, when developed, would access through the Rosemary subdivision.
Okay. And the other question I had is if you look at this directly behind the church, it almost looks like there's a landlocked parcel, kind of odd-shaped, right behind the church. How is that parcel accessed? I don't know if you, if you look at this, it's on the lower left-hand corner of the parcel we're talking about.
Are you looking at the location map?
What's that? I'm looking at the overview, yeah. So if you look at it, it's kind of right where it says Brayburn, yeah, right in there.
Right.
If you look at the GIS map, with the-
Oh, that is part of Brayburn's HOA.
That is part of Brayburn? Okay.
Brayburn HOA, yeah, correct.
Okay. All right.
I just had a question for the applicant in terms of what was the price point that they were looking at for these homes? That's a great question. We're not, you don't even know exactly what the development costs are at this stage, and we have, the footprints of the homes that were used on the site are some other homes that we're about to start in Milton. We haven't designed the actual homes for this development, and so we really don't know yet, honestly.
Can we ask?
Do you have another question?
Yeah. Again, back to the point, and again, I forgot the fact that the Birmingham Highway is under state control. I am concerned that school bus, I don't know what, with nine locations, how many children would be getting on a bus? But I'd certainly be concerned with the bus stopping on Birmingham Highway to pick up the children.
We have our traffic engineer, Rob Del Ross, here tonight. I'd like for him to come up and talk a little bit about some of the improvements that are gonna be happening along Birmingham Highway regarding that.
Good evening, board members. 372, as stated before, state highway, Georgia DOT control. Georgia DOT is, to answer your previous question, not requiring a right-turn lane. Therefore, that's why you don't see a right-turn lane on the plan sheet. Related to this area of 372, I couldn't agree more with the gentleman to my right talking about congestion in this area, especially in the morning peak hour. Staff at the city have been working with Fulton County Schools off and on for probably the past 10 years to try and figure out a solution to get the cars queuing for the elementary school first, and then for the middle school and high school later, onto the private property and off of the main road so that the commuters can go north and south. It is a public safety issue. It's a little bit better now than it was earlier this year. Back in August or September, we were very concerned. We had multiple meetings with Fulton County Superintendent and school board members. From a city perspective, we do have a project planned. It has not started design yet that will help the situation. It will not completely fix the situation. We are looking at extending the right-turn lane. If you can see on the screen where my cursor is, we're looking to extend that northbound right-turn lane into the school property. is, we're looking to extend that northbound right turn lane into the school property further south, basically just making it a really long right turn lane to get people, uh, making that right turn out of the through lane so that the commuters can stay going through. Uh, with that project, we will be looking at building trails, uh, wide sidewalks on both sides of the road, and potentially one or two additional, uh, crosswalks for safe crossing from the, uh, residents on the west side of 372 to the schools on the east side of 372.
So I would also add, and I can forgive us for not checking with the school board, but it is so close to the three schools that they would be districted to. I'm not sure that buses would be stopping in front of that subdivision, but we can get back to you and let you know that literally the elementary school...
Well, if it's one or two, it's, it's still a problem of a school bus. I mean, we're saying, well, maybe there're not going to be any children coming down there, but, uh...
But I'm just saying.
With, with schools that I see, if one child is probably picked up, there must be a hundred people driving and not using bus. I agree with you.
Yeah, right. Exactly. I mean, we can't control who takes their child by car. I'm just saying as far as a bus stopping at the subdivision, I can confirm whether there would even be an offer of bus service or not, being so close to the opposite schools, but we can check on that as well.
Okay, because I want that part right into our suggestions.
The, the right turn lane that you said extending, how, when is that project going to be started and potentially completed?
Haven't even started yet this, at this point, so public works projects take a long time too often. Um, we're at least probably a couple of years out. Uh, we haven't started design. We're going to have right-of-way acquisition on the Fulton County parcel as well as the park in between middle school and elementary school. Um, I would estimate at least two years out.
Before it would even start?
Before we would be finished with construction.
Yep. A comment that I would have regarding access to the schools. Um, I also live in a fairly small subdivision, and having sidewalks within the subdivision really creates a sense of neighborhood. You, you get to meet people out walking the dogs, and also too, it could encourage the children that might live here to walk to school if they had a sidewalk. And though it's not required, one of my suggestions to the applicant would be to include sidewalks. One, to create that neighborhood feel, but also to then allow safe passage to walk to the schools that are so nearby, because I think you'll find a lot of people move here because they want their kids to walk to school. It'd be great to have a sidewalk for them to do it on.
I do have one more question for the applicant. Um, will there be on-street parking available, or is it, uh, based on strictly the count by the, uh, the, their driveways?
No, I do not believe there's proposed to be any on-street parking.
I'm sorry?
I, I do not believe there's proposed to be any on-street parking. It was, uh, we were showing two handicap parking spots at one point.
Or the, uh, well, that would be for the...
Mailbox.
Mailbox.
Mailbox, yeah.
So there'll be a couple of parking spots by the mailbox kiosk, but...
So there would be no on-street parking?
No, I mean, there wouldn't be any. I mean, obviously, if you had a visitor, you know, they're allowed to park on the street temporarily, but there's not going to be like, you know, marked spaces, because this is just your, um, I mean, even though it's not in the rural overlay, it's your typical, um, one-acre lot subdivision that we don't have on-street parking in a large, you know, one-acre or more subdivision.
But if someone decides to park there on a permanent basis, let's say?
They couldn't. I mean...
Is that under enforcement? Would be?
Private road?
Yes, private road.
That would be controlled by our homeowners association.
Pardon?
My understanding is that would be, that would be restricted for sure in our HOA bylaws.
Okay.
So we would enforce that.
That's how I...
I, I do have one question for staff. Seeing that this is T2, currently as it's designed and anticipated, there are no, there, there are no variances being requested or anything. So this is pretty much by right? Is that, would that be a safe way to say this? The way it's laid out currently?
Currently, yes. Mm-hmm.
Great. And, Rob, I realize you just danced up here. I'm going to ask you to dance back up again. And I'm not, I'm never really sure where this falls. Um, I participated some years ago in the, one of the previous trails discussion, and there was a lot of priority placed on trying to get a walking trail from the Brayburn area to allow them a better cut-through over to the schools. Is there any way that we could anticipate or accommodate a trail along the edge of this property to allow that?
So I received a question about that from a resident, uh, this morning, unable to respond to them, uh, before tonight's meeting, and talking with our public works director. Uh, but the short answer to that is, uh, there are ways to make that connection without going through this property. Uh, we talked about that when this first came in, given it's a private subdivision. Uh, we didn't think bringing a trail through this property was the right solution. There are other ways to bring a connection from Brayburn to 372, not through this parcel.
Okay. Great. And then I had, sorry, we keep the applicant dancing.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to, um, say that it's been decades since I've worked on septic field outlay, uh, outlines, but if you look at Lot 1, I believe it is still not allowed to put a septic field or a reserved septic field underneath a house or underneath the driveway, as it's shown.
There we go.
So I don't know if you have to look at a different reserve field, but I don't think under a driveway where you park cars or drive cars or under a house is viable.
You're, you're 100% right on that. Um, we had a very last minute, um, we, we had the setbacks drawn incorrectly on Lot 1, and it caused us to slide the house towards Birmingham Highway. These are the correct setbacks, but we just forgot to relocate that, that septic field. Uh, the septic is pretty complicated on the site with the, the 18, uh, either primary or reserve fields. I believe six of them are in bad soil areas, and we're, we're cutting the road in a good soil area, so we have to extract good soil, put it in the bad soil areas, get all that proctored, tested, and approved by Fulton County. So, uh, the septic, septic locations are definitely not 100% on, on this.
That was going to be my next question is, have you done soil tests? Because I understand this is, can be a bit rocky.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We've already met with, uh, the Fulton County engineer, and we had that whole discussion about, you know, how we can address the, I believe, the six fields that are not currently in good septic areas, and speaking with the grading contractor we believe we're going to be working with. And we haven't developed a septic subdivision ourselves either, but it's not that out of the ordinary that not every single field can be in a good spot. And so it's, it's not, uh, it's not that different than what's often done in septic neighborhoods, from, from what I understand.
Okay, one more, one more comment on the same lot. It looks like there's a 50-foot rear setback. Wouldn't that be a side setback on the left-hand side of the house?
Because, uh, Lot 1 is a corner lot, we are, uh, the front setback is between the home and Birmingham Highway, and the rear setback is behind the home. Um, so that, that is, uh, by far the most challenging lot, and so, uh, we had to, we had to work with that in order to get something that works.
Because it looks like the actual rear of the home has got a 25-foot side setback, and the side of the home's got a 50-foot rear setback.
Yeah, and I, I imagine we'll probably design a different footprint of house. That's a, that's a really big house there that, that works a little bit better with that site.
Yeah, just to let you know, um, yes, uh, what the applicant is saying is correct. The front setback of 60 feet is the Birmingham Highway. It's determined by what's the shortest length when it's on a corner. Um, and so since Birmingham Highway short, uh, front edge is the shortest, that's the front, and then the interior street is called a side corner at 40, and then you take the opposite of the front for the rear, and then the south property line is 25. And then additionally, we don't really dictate which direction the house faces. Obviously, you're probably going to have it facing during the street, but that's really up to the builder which way they direct the house, so.
Good. Thanks.
Um, one other question. The underground stormwater detention system, without getting into technicalities, um, which I want to learn more about, but later, um, is this, this underground, so on top of it can be grass and a playground? What, the, the idea is it's buried? Is that it? And then what can go on top of it?
I know that we can sod on top of it. We probably can't put any playground equipment there, and I haven't asked that question. And so the, the idea is that that's going to be just a, mainly just a sodded landscaped area. Um, the, uh, the, the detention system is, uh, I believe, going to be corrugated metal pipe, uh, but it can also be concrete. There's a few different options that are, that are similar. Um, and so the answer may be dictated by which material we use, uh, but we weren't anticipating on...
And the drainage on those, and maybe if Jerry is, our hydrology engineer wants to jump in, the drainage on them basically, because I don't see any out, any output pipes, the drainage is basically, it seeps into the groundwater?
Their runoff reduction will require the retention of the first inch of runoff on that. So that's, the idea is to put that at that location.
So it is detention?
Well, you have detention and runoff reduction. You have a, a mixture. It's like I call a cake. You have a layer for, a layer of retention where you hold the water forever, and then you detain over top it for the different storms.
Okay, so you see, combination?
Yes. I mean, this is a combination with the swales and stuff too. So it's, we had numerous meetings with them to get this hydrology figured out. Uh, and you can put this, we, I would point out, up the street over here, the Echo Development, that has underground detention, that has large diameter. You could draw, to put a car through it. So that's what we're seeing. What's that?
City Hall.
So, I mean, the cost, these are inexpensive, but now with the cost of everything, they're becoming economical. You can actually put tanks underneath them made out of plastic. You can put anything over top of it. You can't put a structure over it. It's mainly a grassed area.
So the runoff reduction would be an infiltration system?
Yes, it has to be retained on the site.
Right.
It cannot be, you are reducing the amount of actual water leaving the site.
And that's what RR stands for, runoff reduction.
Yes, runoff reduction.
Answered my other question. Yes.
Very good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Vic?
No.
Sammy?
Good.
Brian?
No.
Fred? Fred?
Just want to make sure that the comments that we have made have been recorded before we move.
Yeah, I think you'll make a recommendation with a vote, and you can insert your comments so we make sure they get captured into the recommendations.
Fred, you want to take a, take a, Fred's like, I don't want to summarize. Trey, Trey wants to summarize. No.
All right. I, I move that we recommend approval, and with the following condition, that we spend time looking at the bus stop and the, the traffic on that. That's the only condition I can think of that we've talked about.
The other can, the other can, I wouldn't call it so much a condition, but a recommendation that they look at sidewalks.
Yeah, right. And the recommendation to include sidewalks.
Correct. I'll second that.
Okay.
Any com, further comments?
We also talked about the, uh, the front gate as well.
Yeah, the setback on, setback on the front gate.
Yeah, but that's, that's legally, I mean, that's...
That's, I think they have to do that.
Yeah, I think that's not a...
Yeah, the sidewalks were not required, the other issue, the turn lane was not required, but we're recommending it.
What about a revised plat for Lot 1?
They have to do that anyway.
You have to, that's, you'll have to do, you'll have to revise the plat for Lot 1, just to make it conforming with when you get to the building permits, too?
Right, it'll all be done at the LDP, so I'm...
Land Disagreement. Okay, we have a motion for a recommendation on 12780 Birmingham Highway preliminary plat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you. We're going to switch to old business, which is an update on some proposed preliminary plats. As we discussed earlier, what we're going to do is go ahead and get the updates from staff on Blakely Manor. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on the update for the Crab Apple Market North? Okay, seen none. So what we'll do is get an update from staff on Blakely Manor, and as we approved earlier in the general, in the agenda, we will then move general public comment to after that update. Um, are there, anyone else wants to submit a yellow card? Submit now. Okay, Mrs. Freemanville. Tracy?
Yes. Okay, so Blakely Manor, the preliminary plat was before you back in December of last year. It was recommended that, um, planning commission had several concerns. I'm going to quickly just review the presentation that we reviewed in December. We'll highlight the concerns that you all had, and then taking that steps forward to what, what has occurred since that meeting. Blakely Manor is located on Freemanville Road. Uh, it is zoned AG1, 50.09 acres, and the proposal is to subdivide the parcel, excuse me, into 36 single-family detached homes with a density of .72 units per acre. The location map to the right shows, uh, the subject site. It is east of the Bond Lake subdivision, um, and north of the White Columns subdivision, and the Oaks at White Columns, and just south of the Birmingham Road and Freemanville Road intersection. The site plan for Blakely Manor proposes 36 single-family lots ranging in size from one acre to 2.55 acres. There are three stormwater management basins. Those are highlighted on the map, uh, an existing lake at the entrance, and then a basin on the north rear property, and a basin on the south rear property. It is proposed to have a private gated entrance with a private 44-foot right-of-way. Um, on the north property line, a restricted access route is proposed, proposed for emergency vehicles only. That gate will be, um, secured with a NOX pad, um, only for emergency services to access. Um, all lots will access the lots from the internal road. Um, lots 32 and 33 will access from the proposed eyebrow on the map, and a traffic study was completed for this development that proposed or recommended a deceleration lane, um, and there would be no access easement, um, required, a 10-foot no-access easement along Freemanville Road. Again, this is just a, uh, enlarged view of the rear of the property line, showing a gang mailbox, mail kiosk area located in the cul-de-sac, um, and again, the highlight of the two stormwater basins at the rear of the property. So at that December 20th meeting, planning commission did recommend to the community development director that the applicant consider the following items. Number one was to review the hydrology study as it relates to adjacent properties, um, to really review the traffic study regarding speed and access for the property, uh, to conduct a further review of the tree canopy survey, uh, as it's assessed by our city arborist, and to consider the development impact on adjacent properties. I have staff here, the applicant has done additional work, and we have additional information, and I have staff here for each of these items. The, the first one that we will address is the hydrology. So I invite our site engineer, Jerry Overholzer, up to talk about the extensive hydrology that was conducted.
Good evening again. Uh, the first thing on your display is, I really wanted to point out, this is the existing drainage map. So in other words, this is where the water flows as we speak today. We believe these patterns have been there since prior to cultivation of land. So basically... So basically, this has been here for thousands of years. Gives you an idea where the water drains right now as of today. How do I switch to the next? Could you show me that before I screw up here? Oh, okay. They don't let me play with these things in the office. Now we have is the preliminary plat drainage basin. As you can see, we're actually reducing the runoff up the basin Ds, and we're basically keeping the same amount of basins B and C. E, you can see the smaller ones. The majority of this water in the subdivision now is going to the existing pond. That is a farm pond. It has no water source. It has no outlet. It's being converted into a stormwater management facility, which probably is a really good solution for that. So you can see overall, the amount of area that's draining to the off-site through these neighborhood properties has been reduced. We did go through and basically, we did request the applicant to go ahead and perform a peer review, where they brought in an additional engineer to review our comments and also the comments of the design engineer. The the firm we brought in, they had already worked with the White Columns neighborhood. They had represented some neighbors neighbors on Von Lake, so we felt that this was probably the best one to come in there since he knew that basin and he reviewed it and provided his observations and recommendations. And he was an occurrence with the design, preliminary design as it is right now. He did have some recommendations as we get into construction, which we will follow. So that's that's where we are. We're confident in the preliminary. And I did will point out, this still is a preliminary design. It is not a final design. We don't have the details of how the ponds will work. We still have a lot of work to do in the construction side of documents when it comes to the outlets on these ponds.
So would that not being final, still remain the same number of units of housing?
Yes, I don't know. Yes. Right now, we're very confident the basins drainage basin sizes will not change. They spent a lot of time doing it. It's just we don't have the actual details of the control structures, the velocities and stuff. So there's all there's we that's why I always want to point out, we do a preliminary study and it's not final till we get into the actual land development permitting process.
Very good.
Madam Chairman, is there any given any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, so these basins, A1, A2, that have the off-site, is that a run-on?
No, that means that water's coming onto the site from off-site.
Right, so it's a run-on to that basin?
Yes.
In addition to that area?
Gotcha. When you when you see the areas extend out, that means that water is coming in. And so they're actually getting water from off-site that they somehow have to control. And they can bypass that water, but they have to work with it. They can't they can't build a dam and just not treat it. There is a couple of small basins where the water will runoff. As you can see, basins E, C, and B are what we call bypass, but there is no development in those basins. It'll all be taken into account when the final hydrology study is presented to us and approved.
I just have one quick question on the hydrology study. That's the one from, was it BJ Campbell or Campbell?
Yes.
We got that email today and, you know, not being hydrologists, that seemed very complete and very thorough, along with a lot of recommendations. Is that something that's available to the public? Is that something, you know, that if somebody has a hydrology question?
I've already sent it to an interested party. So yes, it's it's available to the public. Yes.
I think that'd be good to share with anybody who's got a question.
Anything that's sent to us is public record. It can be opened up through an open record.
Okay.
Robert?
Traffic study for Blakely Manor. Wait for the display. There we go. Real briefly, I can get into the numbers. I can get into as much as the math and the analysis as you'd like, but staff required a traffic study for the access point on Freemanville, and staff supports the recommendations from the traffic study. Basically, what it says is it does meet the threshold for requiring a right turn lane by the city code. We support that. We recommend it. I believe the applicant's planning on doing it. It does not meet the warrant for a left turn lane coming south, and staff supports that recommendation based on the analysis. Freemanville Road, as we all know, yes, there are safety issues. Yes, there are speeding issues. The speeding issues are very important to staff and to mayor and council. We've spent a lot of time over the past couple of years talking about speeding. While I have the chance to speak into the microphone, just to make sure you as board members are aware and the residents behind me are aware, the cities don't have the ability to change speed limits on city-owned roads. Every speed limit, every posted white sign you see on a public road is reviewed by the state and is controlled by the radar permit. So if city were to go out and reduce a speed limit, we would be limiting our police ability to write tickets using radar, which is not what we would want to do. We have had success recently in proposing a couple of speed limit reductions around town. We will continue doing that. It's very important to us to try and improve safety and very important to our mayor and council currently. Any questions for me? Nope. Great, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, board members. Well, we lost it. Just give me a second. Okay. So I'm here to talk to you about the tree survey that was done out there. Per your request, I did make a site visit to the site and looked at the specimen trees that were identified. I know there was some concern about the condition ratings of the tree, so just wanted to give you kind of a quick snapshot picture of what the industry definitions for tree health is. So we kind of rate trees from very poor to excellent condition. It's kind of like getting your report card from your conduct grade at school. You have to be perfect to get the excellent condition. No flaws is going to mostly pertain to young trees that are very vigorous and don't really have any issues at all with them. And then you get into your very poor trees, which are basically on their way out. So by the tree ordinance, we define specimen trees as a healthy tree that meets certain size criteria. So a healthy tree is anything that's going to be fair or better. So I know there were not many trees listed as good condition, but most of the trees were listed in fair condition, and I consider those to be specimen trees. So just wanted to assure you that there's some trees on here that maybe were not in excellent or good condition, but they are in fair condition, and those will be treated as specimen trees in this project. So I didn't know if you had any other further questions about the tree survey? Nope.
One of the last concerns that that Planning Commission had in December was the development impact on adjacent properties. Robin, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, that one. Okay. So obviously, it would be wonderful to be able to coordinate every property owner that's adjacent or nearby to make everything make sense, but the world is not perfect in that way. So I will just go over what is out there and around it. Obviously, to the west is Von Lake subdivision that is almost completed with all its lots being built. To the south is Turtle Creek Estates, which basically are these flag lots right here that come to the east, and then the Oaks at White Columns. And then there is additional properties associated with the Rosington properties, which includes the Turtle Creek Estates, these flag lots, and then goes to the north and actually has access through Birmingham Highway. So again, as I stated, you know, every property owner has their rights to develop. There's not a lot that we can do to, you know, address the other adjacent properties. It's just at the time, if they want to go ahead and, let's say they want to, you know, build on those existing flag lots, that's a possibility, or the Rosington property could be totally redeveloped and have a subdivision. So there's many issues that it's, you know, we can look at the potential, but we can't really dictate what's going to happen in the future. So I think that was some of the concerns. Again, we don't really have an answer. We're just letting you see what is surrounding it and how this might impact the adjacent properties, as well as there are a few other large lots that are adjacent to the property. And I think that the hydrology third-party information tried to address some of the concerns of one of those property owners as well. But with that said, I'm open to any questions you might have.
I might echo on Robin as well. The subdivision down here in the in the it's not the Oaks at White Columns, but the adjacent, it does have existing interparcels access. At the rear cul-de-sac of that development, it was when that development was platted and and developed, they did save an area for interparcel to the north. So there is an existing interparcel access existing today. We also have a representative from the applicant here, if you have any questions or would like to hear from him.
Did we not in December talk relative to whether it could or could not have sidewalks? There was some conversation relative to.
I don't recall. We did not record that as an action item to go back and look at.
Because talking about areas of being able to walk your dog and all that, I.
There would not be a sidewalk required on the frontage.
Right.
Because but interior, I understand the question, sidewalks along there.
Right. Any questions of staff? And Paul, keep me straight here. We moved general public comment after the staff presentation, and that would include the if the applicant wants to comment, he can comment under general public comment.
So I thought you thought the general public, there's a separate general public comment agenda item. Are you talking about?
Yes, we moved it, sorry.
Within this?
We moved it to be next, because most of these people want to talk on this topic. But but it was a general public comment because we've already heard it. So we had moved general public comment in case they wanted to comment. Go after this.
General, there is there is a period of public comment within each one of these items, but then there's a separate general public comment that isn't supposed to address any.
We were told since the public hearing already occurred on this that the way to hear it would be to under general public comment, so we moved it to be next.
This has been heard in December with the technical, the advertised legal public hearing. So.
So I'm going to open general public comment, I think.
I would suggest that you, well, I didn't follow that was what the motion was when you referenced general public comment. I think it would make sense, are you not having the applicant, I mean, I would suggest the applicant present at the top, just to follow the general procedures.
So I'm going to open it for general public comment. If you would call the applicant first, how many other general public comments do we have?
We have the applicant and then. Five and a maybe.
Okay. So if the applicant would want to come and make any comments?
Mr. Scott Reese.
Again, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Scott Reese, from Rees &amp; Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia, 3004. I'm here tonight representing the Chatham family in their application for a preliminary plat to develop 36 lots on 50 acres located on Freemanville Road. We were here earlier in December, went over, I think, the logistics of a buyright subdivision, understood some concerns from you and the neighbors, where I think we went above and beyond. We met again with the city staff, went over a hydrology study. It was brought up just as an extra layer to have a third-party peer review. We welcomed that. I don't know if you've read it yet. I think you'll find that it was glowing terms of what we've presented. We have no problem whatsoever sharing with that community. I love being patted on the back. There was concern about the difference in fair quality and good quality. I think Sandra explained that very good, very well. There, from a management standpoint, there is no difference. It is, as you can imagine, trees of that age and that size rarely are going to have excellent or great condition. We manage them the same, whether they're fair or excellent. We had the highest level of traffic study we can do on a residential street with an individual traffic count. It, as the city traffic engineer explained, it recommended a turn lane going north, not one coming south. That is in the proposal before you. Let's see, three concerns, four concerns? Oh, my time is up?
You have two minutes.
We try to be as terse as possible. I will ask, be glad to answer any questions. I think we've demonstrated our ability or our willingness to work to address any questions. Thank you.
Public commenter is Linda Ferris.
My name is Linda Ferris. I live at 14090 Freemanville Road in Milton. And I have several concerns, the first of all being traffic. You guys don't live on Freemanville. I do. The speed limit is a concern, but just the number of cars and trucks and landscapers, and now we're having 18-wheelers. I followed a Walmart truck from Highway 9 down Bethany Bend to Hopewell to Red Road, and they went past my house on down to the roundabout. I don't know where it finally ended up, but there's more and more 18-wheelers on Freemanville Road. The only thing I can figure is Highway 9 is a mess, so they're looking for other routes. Number two, if you do not have a turn lane into that subdivision heading south, you're going to backlog the traffic. It's going to be terrible, especially school in the morning, people going to work and school letting out, and then people going home. I don't think you all realize the significance of traffic and how it affects the rest of us on Freemanville Road, although I live further south. I live closer to the South Phillips Circle. But still, we have to go that way to do things and come back that way. And there's just not that many streets to move yourself around if you're going to be backlogged in traffic. My next thing is, young lady, I did not understand the the tree report. I don't understand what you meant, but the city proudly announced on December 3rd on Facebook that they were very proud to be the 11th year in a row to be a wildlife habitat city, but yet we continue to clear-cut land and destroy habitat, not only for the little birds, but believe it or not, turkeys rest, excuse me, roost in those trees.
The two minutes is over.
20. I'm sorry, I have a few more things to say.
Two minutes.
No, I'm sorry. You need to hear this, because the city says they're proud to be a wildlife habitat city that we need to consider when you guys allow clear-cutting to be done and destroying the habitat of the wildlife that you say you're so proud of. Thank you.
The next commenter is Renee Stidson. Okay. The next commenter is Renee Stidson.
Oh, okay. You didn't say one way or the other. I'm sorry. I can go ahead. Okay. Renee Stidson, 15540 Freemanville Road. I moved to Milton to be in an area where there are few subdivisions and more green space for livestock, farm animals, et cetera, AG1. Land is vital to keep Milton a great city to live in. The next speaker is Lisa Blackwell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Blackwell. I live at 1365 Nix Road. That is the street that is directly adjacent to the proposed property. I'm sorry, I was unable to attend the meeting in December. My husband was grievously ill and has since passed. The closest body of water is the pond that is on that property. We believe that that pond feeds the creek that runs through our property, which also feeds our well. We have a surface well on our property. And I'm not sure about the hydrology study, but we had someone from the city checking the water flow of the creek. It doesn't flow a lot, but it does feed our well. Also concerned that the runoff from the property or the development will affect adversely our well water and the creek. Additionally, we're concerned about the increased traffic on Nix Road that's already used as a cut through because of the people trying to avoid the two intersections off of Birmingham Road, that one on Freemanville Road and the one on Birmingham Highway. Thank you.
The next speaker is Merritt Stidson.
Hello, Merritt Stidson, 15540 Freemanville Road, 3004. Thank you for having me. Couple of things I'd like to say is that, first and foremost, we recognize the property owner's right to take and develop this land. That is not in question. What we're asking for, though, is we'd like to see them reduce the total number of lots on it. Mr. Reese has said that they won't be asking for any variances. He's been in the business a long time. My wife and I have a side hustle where we buy older homes and renovate them. Well, guess what? I have no doubt he's going to come back to you with a request at some point for a variance, because that's what happens in all of these projects. And I would say that if that comes up, the variance be rejected. They also say very much that on the Chatham, on the Chatham company website, it says Milton is, and this is verbatim, Milton is a scenic and affluent city located within Milton, just north of Atlanta, known for its equestrian estates, expansive green spaces, and top-grade schools. He's about ready to gut the green spaces in this area by putting 36 homes in there. We'd prefer that they drop the number down to 32, leaving enough green space for some of the wildlife animals that are there. I have been on that property many times since before they ended up buying this property. It's gorgeous. He says, I also don't want you to change this to residential. I'd like you to leave it AG1. We have had chickens. We will have them again. Some people like to have chickens and rabbits. White Columns has banned that. Well, if we want to stay rural, then the people within reason, I mean, I don't want to see them have a bunch of cows out there, but if they've got some chickens and rabbits, I think that is absolutely in line with Milton. The property, Mr. Scott said it's not economically viable to have any, anything less on there. I went out and did some research for the National Association of Home Builders.
It's been two minutes, please.
Request just another minute.
Up to you.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to allow an extension of a minute.
I'll second.
Thank you very much.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. One more minute.
Thank you. I, given the documents here, you can look at some of the numbers and the websites that concur with that, that they'll have a profit somewhere between $465,000 and $550,000 per house, based on what they are. I averaged the total house numbers, and they're saying that that's not economically viable. Somehow I doubt that. If you look at the other things, Milton is the richest city in Georgia. People pay to come here, and they're going to. We know that property values are going to go up. Fed now has had six rate reductions. They expect three rate cuts this year going into next year. These houses will not even be built until sometime in 2025. Property values are going to go up. He said they're going to start at $2,000, $2 million? You and I know we've passed how many properties since starting at $2 million, and then you go and you find out, and it's 2.5 or above. So please take time to look at those things. Redfin, I've included a number of them in here. Please, just, we want a little more green space for some of the animals that are here. That's my main request. And if they do care about it, like their website says, in black and white, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any more public comment?
Yes, it is Cynthia Chandler.
Cynthia Chandler, I live at 263 McGarrett Road, Canton, Georgia, and I have the honor and privilege of representing the Rosington Estate. It's 80 acres of unbelievable beauty. The Rosingtons bought it. They've owned it for 30 years. Gary and Dale love to come there to get away from the rock bands, the concerts, and have nature. It has got waterfalls, boulders, a lake that's pristine that doesn't, it's not green, it's not brown. This is a note from Dale that she wanted me to read into the record. "We encourage anyone from the city of Milton to come walk the grounds to get a better view and understand of what an enormous chunk of property it is. It hurts us to know that another developer is planning to put in so many homes on so many small lots, as we would never want to see that happen with our property. It's too beautiful, and we adore the land and the animals on the land." I'm sorry, I'm just upset about all this. "And would hope that somehow we would be able to preserve that. Daily, there are anywhere from a dozen to three dozen deer in the front of our yard, running all around, young ones, beautiful birds, any turtles, rabbits and squirrels, and beautiful lakes stocked with fish. I can only imagine what would happen if a developer were to come in and turn all of the city of Milton into many subsidized lots. Part of the joy of buying each parcel by parcel over the years has become available was because, as we as a family wanted to preserve it, and Gary, their dad, thought it was worth every bit of money to have a sanctuary away from the busy city. And that's why people should want to be in that area, not just to turn it into a brand-new bit of a city like Atlanta with freshly planted many trees, instead of maintaining the beautiful trees that have been around much longer than any of us." If you want, and then she invited all of y'all to come to the property. She wants you to see it. But the 80 acres that is going to be left behind this development, it's sad. And I love the Chatham boys and the people. Do a North Valley, do something on three or four acres. You're going to decimate everything there.
Two minutes.
That really upsets me, as you can tell. My heart is racing with the thought of that property being decimated. And this is going to...
The last commenter, if they want to speak, is Robin Miller.
I have to turn this down. My name is Robin Miller. I live at 110 Oak Heights Court in Milton, 3004. I live at that corner of Freemanville and the Oaks at White Columns. I spoke last time in December. I have a question, because I really didn't understand the arborist. If you could explain to me, if a tree is fair, does that mean it can be cut down or not? So what trees can't be cut down? When does it become a tree that's good enough that it shouldn't be cut down as the Milton, who is a tree city designated city? What does that mean? I'm asking. I really don't understand. Could she answer that for us, please? Is that a possibility?
After, after the comment, if she chooses.
Okay. I would really like to understand that, because it's very unclear to me. And I've lived here for 22 years. The other thing I want to tell you is the comment about the cars. My office is right next to the road. I hear cars every day. When I pull into my neighborhood in the Oaks at White Columns, I've been almost rear-ended multiple times because there's so many cars on Freemanville Road now. And there is no left turn lane into my neighborhood because it was built 22 years ago, when maybe there was a car going by every five minutes. Now it's constant, and there are 18-wheelers going up and down the road. It is something that is a commission you need to address and think about, and as a city, we need to address and think about. And that's not to say that, that this community shouldn't be built, but I do agree that it should be less dense than is proposed. And I just want you to be aware of that. The news from the Rosington Estate is the best news I've heard in months about, about development in our community. And, and I look forward to discussing that more with her. So thank you, and thank you for your time.
That's all the public comment?
Any further comments from staff? Any questions for staff?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, what's the next move? Now that we have revisited this.
Right. So first of all, I just didn't know whether you wanted Sandra to come up to address some of the questions that the commenter had before we go.
Yes, I'd like to.
Yes, that'd be great.
Just need a question for her.
So if you could just briefly go over the whole tree permitting process, especially as it relates to specimen trees and their removal?
Okay, sure. So the ordinance does allow for the removal of specimen trees, but for the removal of specimen trees, you are required to do extra replacement. So we have a formula that usually have to plant back 150% of the canopy removed for specimen trees. We also have for the overall site development, there will be a minimum canopy coverage based on the zoning and lot sizes that will have to be met. And a third of that does have to come from existing trees to remain. Does that answer the question?
And then just re-review your categorization about fair and all that, so.
Well, so anything in fair or better condition will be considered a specimen tree. So every, and the sizes of the specimen trees are 24 inches in diameter at breast height for most hardwoods, 27 inches in diameter at breast height for pines, sweet gums, and tulip poplars, and then eight inches in diameter at breast height for your understory trees such as dogwoods and red buds.
Great. So based on your assessment, will they be able to meet with their existing plan the percent canopy from existing trees and have room to do the 150% replanting?
Yes, I believe they will. They will be required to do street trees on all new streets in a development. You are required to do street trees. So the trees, the streets will be lined with trees, and then they will also have room to plant other trees on the site as well.
Any other questions for staff? We don't need a motion on this.
Right. So in December, there was no motion made on this. You requested, obviously, staff to come back with more information. So that is what we would need.
You do need a motion to send it back to...
Okay, just send it back.
So I have a comment and then a question.
Okay.
So my name's Trey James. This is a volunteer board who I think oftentimes find ourselves frustrated in this situation and not against you, but with you. I've worked with Scott Reese for years, and I know him very well personally. He has helped me look for land for years to put my home, my single home and my family of four kids and wife on. And when I tried to cut corners in the process, he held me accountable. So I know him to be a good man. And I think you wear the wrong color shirt when you come to these meetings. You need to be a little more subdued. But he has a job in responding to developers. And the developers are looking at this property saying, here's 50 acres that we can monetize. And I wasn't going to put you on the spot, Scott, but I know the answer to the question is, are you doing things legally? The answer is yes. Are you doing things according to code? We, when this meeting's over, y'all all walk out and we go, gosh, that's hard, because we aren't lawmakers. We're not even approvers of this project. And yet this is the forum that you completely have the opportunity to voice your concerns and your complaints in. And when I bought my house on Doris Road, I was second in line to a developer who was going to put 28 houses on 36 acres. And today, there's one house in one, there's one house on that property for the exact same reason that you guys want fewer homes on that property. This meeting, in my opinion, and this leads to the question, but in my opinion, this meeting is not the place where those changes can be made. I think this is just created for public comment that's then recorded. But action, I think, happens at the city council level. And that's the question. If I'm wanting, I mean, really, the law has to be changed because it's one, it's one home per acre in Milton, which is actually better than almost anywhere else in Georgia, at least in the metroplex, the metro area. It's amazing, and it has great benefit as residents. But the Chatham family is just doing what the law is allowing them to do, which is one house per acre. So the question is, how do we, as citizens, if we want to protect this environment, which I do, and put, I would love for this not to happen personally, but that's not my, I don't have a voice in that other than to go to, I think, city council to say, how do we stop continued development? Now, the flip side of that is, if I've got 50 acres and I've got a tax bill to pay, how do I, how do I pay that when taxes are crazy on our property because of all the home values? So I don't have an answer to that. But I think the solution to the problem that you guys have may come in two, two ways. One is getting vocal with the city council. We don't make rules. We're just looking at these plats saying, do they conform to the rules? And if so, we're kind of, we're kind of administrative in nature. If there's something glaring that doesn't fit, we're the gatekeeper before it goes to the city council to approve. So I think the voice needs to be with the city council. Am I right?
Well, in this case, since it's a preliminary plat by right, as you, as you had stated, that they can develop this because it is by right. They don't need any variances, as we discussed. But any changes to that becomes a difficulty because many of these people have owned those property rights to develop.
Right.
For 200 years. Yeah.
Yeah. So when, when I hear the, the comments about, you know, Milton being scenic estates, and I understand the frustration of that because I have that same view. We want to hear it because I think the voice is important, but I'm not sure that it falls on ears that can solve that, a problem here. So what would you recommend? Is there a way to protect Milton from further development? I think I know the answer.
So I think you're correct in that we can only enforce what existing zoning regulations there are. I will point out that about 18 months ago, we changed the development regulations for AG1. It used to be that you had to have only a minimum of 100 feet at the building line, meaning that at the 60-foot front setback, and that was a little technical, it was supposed to be a minimum of 100 feet. Well, that creates very rectangular, skinny lots. So we were able to show the council the, what we thought was wisdom in increasing it to 150 feet. So while it does not increase the minimum lot size required at one acre, it does, I believe, help with a better design of a one-acre subdivision. Further, it is very difficult to change the minimum lot size of AG1. As many people hear, that would be their druthers. And, but reality is, if that was proposed, I think it would be really, really difficult. Because what that means is what you alluded to was property rights and what, what can at the end, if they decide to sell, what will be the final price of that? And I know that's hard to hear, and we don't want to hear it. But at the same time, until that changes, there's really... But at the same time, until that changes, there's really not a lot that we can do. Although, I will add, that in the last five years, we've changed the code to make it easier for developers to do what's called large lots, which are three-acre minimum lots. And there are many incentives, development incentives that we have, you know, we're using the carrot instead of the stick, right, for developers. We have had some successful developments. The homestead, which used to be a golf course off of Hopewell, I think it's 135 acres, you know, there's 33, 32 lots on that many acres. That's incredible. That's a big, big win for the city. There, that's the largest of that type of development, but we have other smaller developments that are doing three acres along Hopewell, actually. There's some other ones. So, that is voluntary. We can't force people to do only three-acre lots. But we do as much as we can to encourage large lots. And that's where our position as the community development department has been, is we hear you, we hear the people, but at the same time, it is a very, it's a tight rope between the property rights and what the people of the citizens want to see as well, so.
And just one final comment. I think this board could easily be sitting out there with you guys. We are not against you in any way. We're more for you than we are against. We're against development also, but Mr. Chatham has the right. So, I'm sure David would appreciate this or will appreciate this, but I, I think your best chance is appealing to him directly. Writing him a letter, calling him. He's actually a very nice man, doesn't mean anybody harm, but he has a business to run.
On one other issue, I was a little bit concerned and I understand with Highway Nine construction, Freemanville Road is not a truck route. And why are we not enforcing that? And what do we need to enforce that?
Disclaimer, I am not the police chief, but I'll do my best to answer that question. Enforcing truck rules in metro Atlanta and in the state of Georgia is very difficult. The way the state laws are written, it allows any truck that's legally allowed to be on our roads. I believe that weight is about 70,000 or 80,000 pounds. To be on any road as long as they can prove that they need to be on that road to get to their origin or their destination. So, if a police officer were to pull that Walmart truck over and they were able to prove, I'm on this road to get to this address, they wouldn't be in violation of anything at all, even though they're on a road that's not designated as a truck route. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, but if there was an alternative truck route they could have taken, they would be in violation?
Correct. So, for example, let me think of a good example of that.
Because Freeman parallels.
Cogburn and Hopewell, parallel nine pretty well. So, if, based on where they were coming from and going to, if for some reason they were on Hopewell and they weren't on nine getting to their destination, yeah, I would think that's a problem. Again, I'm not a police officer. I, I, don't quote me on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
At this point, do we need a motion to refer the furtherance of the preliminary plat, plat back to staff?
Yes.
I'll entertain such a motion. Well, I guess I can make it, but go ahead, Kurt.
I move that we recommend this preliminary plat going back to staff to take into account the considerations we've talked about from specifically the, the well, the surface well was concerning to me, even though the hydrology was very well done. And I know that the applicant has done a, again, talked about a top-of-the-line traffic study, a top-of-the-line hydrology study, you know, but there are some things that I think we need to look at, you know, specifically like that surface well.
I'll second that.
Any further comments?
So, are you recommending approval, but with some conditions? I don't understand.
We don't have to recommend approval or denial, just we can recommend further considerations for staff. I don't think we have to approve or deny, do we? We just make recommendations for.
We can provide recommendations and comments.
Yep. So, providing further recommendations and comments.
So, recommend for staff review.
Mr. City Attorney, like, at what point can we allow them to start the LDP process?
Well, it goes back to the director.
Okay.
For the ultimate decision, based on the comments that he receives.
Okay.
Further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance and participation and input. And I'll call the next item, which is the update on the preliminary plat for Crab Apple Market North Residential at La Coma Trace.
Madam Chair, we do have one. It came in late, one comment or for this.
Never mind. Let's let these people leave. We have one other general public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the next item.
Oh, we do have one for the next item.
Okay. They must have come in later, so.
Yeah. Are we okay, is everybody okay with us taking the general public comment on this next item after the staff update?
Want to make a motion to add an additional item of general public comment at the place you were?
I'd like to make a motion to add an additional general public comment after the, after the staff update on the Crab Apple Market North Residential. Second by Brian.
You'll be next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody, anybody opposed? Passes unanimously.
You got one more thing.
Okay, now we're ready for Crab Apple Market North.
There was one more.
Okay. Soon as the door closes. That would be looking right across the street, correct, Tracy?
That's correct. So, in December, at the same, at the same meeting, the Crab Apple Market North Residential was presented to you. You all had recommended approval of this preliminary plat with a few concerns. We simply wanted to take this opportunity to update council as to what the applicant has done to incorporate those, those concerns and comments. Just really quick, I just want to identify the location here on the right, City Hall. This property literally is relocated right across the street here. The, the council had, excuse me. The council recommended approval with three different considerations. One was to consider the steps necessary to reduce the total number of parking spots from 57 to 51. That in part was a concern of the parking that was located in the upper north part of the property. On the left is the original proposed site plan. On your right is the revised plan incorporating the comments from the December 20th meeting. So, you can see that the applicant did eliminate the six spots in the upper northern part. The next consideration was to consider vegetative buffers along property lines adjacent to the residential uses. And the applicant will be putting heavy vegetation along that property line. The third was to consider the lighting in the back corner to be a way that's not problematic for the residents. That's been taken into consideration as well. You will see on the original site plan to the left, the revised on the right, that the applicant decided to flip the entrance. So, the townhomes moved to the west side with the large end units on either end, on bookends. The entrance was moved away from the residential on the west to the east. And then the applicant, the city staff worked with the applicant to, for the proposed on-streets parking spaces to accommodate the six spaces that were eliminated in the rear. It's noteworthy that these spaces are for the overall Crab Apple Market development. So, the parking for the townhomes are interior to the units themselves. And then the remainder of those spaces would be for the remainder of the parking spaces that are required for the entire development. So, again, just an update, oftentimes, you don't see what happens after the considerations are made at planning commission. So, staff did work with the applicant and we wanted to bring back this to update you.
Well, we certainly appreciate that.
That's great.
Yeah, I think this is an example of good input from the, from the residents, ignorance under advisement, you know, the streets are, you know, the street spots are sheerly preferential to the ones stuffed in the way back. So, very, very well done.
Right.
Nice job.
Excellent.
Great. And I believe we have any more questions for staff before we get a public comment? Hey, go ahead and call public comment.
It is Mr. John Gold. Oh, it says, I do not want to speak. So, let me read it into the resident. The residents adjacent to the proposed plat won't want to thank the planning commission for protecting the wooded area, which serves as a buffer from the proposed parking for our homes. We also want to thank Adam Orkin for agreeing to revise the plat. The homeowners are very grateful.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing back up.
Wait, a comment in our favor?
Yeah. We have to, we have to laminate it.
Yes, for the follow-up.
Any other comments or questions on this? I guess I would just make one comment. I think it, it does help for the neighbors to come out and make their concerns known and, and seek to try to find a better solution. I think this is a solution that will work for the area as well as for the neighbors, so. Great. Any other comments on that? So, I will entertain a motion to recommend, or a motion to either forward additional comments or recommend approval for.
We already recommended approval, correct?
You already did that. This is just the report back.
Okay, so.
Yeah, no need.
We just accepted your report back. Thank you.
Very good.
And thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Thank you. New business. Quarterly tree ordinance waiver update.
Good evening again. So, I am happy to report that there are no tree ordinance waivers for this quarter, so we have no new report.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. An update on the comprehensive plan. You all have your.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Shubhajangam, Principal Planner at the city, to give you an update on projects of short-term work program that came out of Comprehensive Plan 2040. The first one on the list is LU1, that is to create a small area plan for Arnold Mill Corridor. And we have already started working on this. We just had a public kickoff for this one on March 21st. And, you know, as you know, there are three phases for this project. Initiate, understand, engage, and discover. So, we are in the second phase of engage and discover. And once we're done with the concept planning, we will move into the third phase where we will kind of write code, if, if, maybe tweak a code. I'm not, I'm not sure where it's going to land, but, you know, we will have some recommendations going to council. So, as I said, we just had a public kickoff. There were, I mean, we had some activities around the map that day and we had live survey, a meter survey that's very popular here. That survey is still going to be open for everybody till April 30th. So, this is a QR code. If you want to go ahead and scan it and open the survey and finish it later, that will be fine. But we are, we, we had a good turnout for this meeting, almost like a 20, 25 people were here and they learned about the scope of the project and, you know, the project, they met the project team. We had a good conversation after the meet, after the presentation here, back in the, near the maps. And I think we are moving forward very well with this project. Next meeting for this project is on June 13. This will be a workshop, like a short that we did for District of Mayfield, where we sat down with the property owners and we literally worked with them to draw what kind of concepts they want here. So, that's when we're going to do that. And in between, we are, we are looking into having some more opportunities, virtual opportunities for a steering committee or other, if property owners wants to speak to us, just one-on-one, just to discuss things, they can do it. So, we'll do other things until June 13, but June 13 is a big day when we will have a workshop for everybody to come in. Next big project is Unified Development Code. So, now we're supposed to go to council in March, but there's some requirement for advertisements that were missed, so it's pushed to April 8th, but it's almost at the last leg and it will be, it, it will be approved. So, hooray. Yeah. Another project, which is not really part of a short-term work program, but it's a very important project. It looks into the impact fee amendment. And as you know, we, Milton charges impact fees and we use that for our capital improvement projects, such as, you know, some projects for parks, fire, road improvements, and police facilities improvement. So, this project, we, the first time they approved the impact fee was 2015, so almost eight, nine years later, we are again kind of looking into, can we increase our impact fee because the market has changed now? So, we may have new rates of impacts fee, but it's up to council to decide to go with the highest impact fee or discounted impact fee. So, we just had a briefing to council in month of March. We are looking to kind of present the, the next, the capital improvement projects for next five years. That presentation will be in April and then in month of May, we'll actually kind of disclose what could be the impact, new impact fee, if they want to approve or stay with the old one. So, that's the schedule for impact fee program. Now, there were two projects under economic engage, economic development or economic engagement manager. She was heading these two projects. One of them is a branding study and in short-term work program, it was under the umbrella of placemaking and branding. Now, this, I'm happy to report that the council has approved the branding just this month, so we have new branding and if you, your keen eyes may have already noticed a different color of Milton over there, so. So, now that we have that, we, many other projects that we're waiting for the new branding and new colors and new logo, they will start rolling out of those things. Another project is the Windward Parkway and Highway Nine Strategic Master Plan. And it is, it is lined up for adoption the next month to council. North Fulton's, as you know, this was a partnership program, project with North Fulton, CID and City of Alpharetta, and they both have adopted this plan. So, we're, we're the last one to do that. And it's going to be done on, I think, April 15th. Now, I did send you a link this morning, so I hope you kind of reviewed the draft plan. So, as I said, we have a new branding, so there was some other projects like marketing plan that was supposed to follow the branding study, so it will start rolling out this year sometime. And also, website enhancement. So. So already Anita, our engagement, economic engagement manager, has worked a lot on the website enhancement. As you can see here, this is our, this is just a clip of our economic engagement, economic development webpage. As you can see, there are many multiple tabs here, actually giving a lot of resources. And these are all new things that she had added. So we are already working on this, and we will be continuing, we will be continuing to improve this further. And many other projects, such as, this is just one, transportation project that wanted to borrow elements of place making and branding into their design. Also, some signage projects that were waiting for branding to be finished, now they will also start rolling and, you know, looking into more concept designing and, basically, they will start building those projects. So we are at the transportation category here, and since Rob Del Ros is here, I would like him to expand on some of the transportation projects that mentioned in short-term work program. And I know you were, wanted, you had many questions last time, so I just asked him to come in today.
You get to hear from me one more time. So I'm going to go through the table that I think is in front of each of you, and I'm going to hit the transportation section, anything assigned to Sarah that was not previously marked as complete. So starting with T1, as you see on the screen, encouraging all roadways to incorporate design elements related to the character area and the branding study. That's from Public Works perspective, that's about 90% complete. We were waiting for the branding study to finish. Now that it is, we're going to be looking for ways to integrate that into our Public Works operations of one idea that we've had, that we were waiting on the branding study to be finished. We're looking at doing some customized manhole covers that you may have seen in other cities and counties, something themed Milton, so hopefully we're able to push that through. That's on the way. T2, collaborate with the bicycling community to create bike routes, that's, and other things. That's 100% complete at this point. T2B, design bikeless features in Milton that are sensitive to our rural character. That's about 50% complete from staff's perspective. We still need to work on implementing some of the recommendations that came out of our comprehensive transportation plan, are related to a prioritized bike network that came through that. T3, consider smart features to improve transportation infrastructure and safety in Milton. We're probably, we haven't done very much on that. We're probably at about 20% there, but we have some things on the way later this year. We're looking at integrating our school zone flashers on a system that we can monitor from City Hall and not need to send a human out to the sign with the timer every time it needs to be modified. We're also looking at some new technology to expand, if you're familiar with the system that Alpharetta has on their traffic signals related to traffic signal preemption for public safety vehicles. That's how fire trucks get green lights. We're looking, expanding that into Milton. We're looking at updating our traffic signals that would basically accept the Alpharetta vehicles due to the way city limit lines are drawn and some mutual aid scenarios. We very often travel across our city limits, Milton traveling to Alpharetta and Alpharetta traveling to Milton to solve fires. We would be updating our intersections to receive their vehicles. We would also be updating our fleet to be able to drive through at Alpharetta, and they would, they would be treated the same way. T3B, similar, consider the use of smart features to improve pedestrian safety. We have a project just outside our front door at the roundabout on 372 where the brewery and the Nest is currently located. You may be familiar, there's been at least one accident there in the past 12 months involving cars leaving the roadway and striking buildings. We have been working with state DOT for a very long time. Later this year, there will be some improvements to that roundabout to, how can I describe this? There will be some pedestrian buttons to try and cross 372 that will start blinking lights at the cars to make them aware that there's someone in the crosswalk. We're also going to be, and I wish I had a graphic for this, we're going to be taking away the second through lane going around the circle on 372. So if you can picture yourself on 372, again, I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of this. Today, there's two through lanes going around the circle. After they're done, those two lanes will still be there, but in order to go through, you'll need to be in the left lane. The right lane will be a right turn only lane dumping you onto Heritage or getting you into Crab Apple Chase.
Good move.
Yeah. We've been waiting for that for a long time. That's on the way. T3C, improve traffic safety and operations through the use of deployment smart technologies. We, again, already talked about school zone flashers, already talked about the public safety preemption. T5, increase community access and use of trails by implementing the community trail prioritization plan. We are under construction right now with the top priority for the Deerfield area that came out of that plan, and that was a mid-block crossing on Bethany at Serenade Court that would provide, once that's in place, that would link a long section of sidewalk on one side of Bethany with a long section of sidewalk on the other side of Bethany with a safe crossing to get from one side to another. That should be done, I would say, in the next two or three months. Currently under construction. Along with that, we are also providing Bethany Creek subdivision along Bethany, just west of Serenade Court, between Serenade and Nine. There's a situation there where Bethany kind of bisects the subdivision itself. There are about 30 rooftops on the north side, there's probably about 60 rooftops on the south side, and there's a situation where homeowners on one side of Bethany can't access their own subdivisions, amenities, pool, and clubhouse and things like that on the other side. So they asked us for a crosswalk. What we came up with, which we think is much safer than just a crosswalk across four to five lanes of traffic with cars going 50 miles an hour, is we're able to do a mini roundabout there. We're able to build a roundabout inside existing pavement, provide safer crossings for pedestrians to get access to their own amenities. We're very excited about when that, when that's going to be done. It's not going to solve, obviously, the congestion on Nine, it's not going to solve the congestion on Bethany. What we do think it will do is it will provide a safe pedestrian crossing, and it will also slow cars down in those off-peak hours. You just physically won't be able to drive 50-plus miles an hour through that section like you can today. Next, T5A. The next three, implement tier, T5A, T5B, T5D. Tier one and tier two projects out of the trail prioritization plan. Each of these are about 50% complete. We've done a good job of knocking out tier one on each of those sections. We're just now beginning to start tackling tier two. So that's still in progress. T5E is the same way. T6, evaluate Milton residents' priorities for and satisfaction with the transportation infrastructure by updating the CTP. That's at 100%. The CTP was just adopted back in December as that update. T7, coordinate with state, regional, and adjacent partners to address transportation needs. That's also at 100%. And then our last one, priorities Bethany character area, Highway 9 sidewalk connections. That will be 100% in the next three months. We feel that that can be 100% as soon as we're able to finish the two projects I talked about before, the mid-block crossing at Serenade and the mini roundabout at Bethany Creek. Questions?
Back up on the crosswalk at the brewery, will it go then where people can get from the parking garage across?
From the Nest to the brewery? There's already a crosswalk there. That crosswalk won't change.
Okay, so.
Just, the state DOT plan is just going to be adding those flashers and those buttons just to cross the multi-lanes on 372. They're not planning on adding it to the side street to Heritage and to Crab Apple Chase.
Well, I had heard in the last two weeks, I was at that restaurant there, and the people were at, in the evening complaining about being able to get across there. So that's, it will have a flashing light to, to slow the people down or?
With the changes that the DOT is currently doing, with the, with the.
That's right.
Pedestrian signals on 372. And by extending those splitter islands to remove the second through lane, that will slow cars down. Other questions for me?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, so just like Rob, we're also going to have Emily Groth from Public Works. She hits lots of sustainability-related projects, so she, she wants to come. She wants to get your input on solid waste management plan and other projects as well that she's doing. So I have invited her next month, so she'll be doing her update. Also, Parks and Rec is invited to come, but they want to come in fall because the summer is their really, really busy time, so they'll probably come in fall. So, any questions for me?
Just a follow-up question on the, or comment on the Windward area study or the Dearborn character area study. I did have a, I'd made the opportunity to watch the presentation that was made to the City of Alpharetta. I would characterize that study, which many of us had really pushed and encouraged, to say, it's step one. It is not a master plan yet. It is, it's a good foundation. It identifies some needs and capabilities of the area. It floats some very good concepts, but we're a long way from a comprehensive plan for that area. So a great first step, but much work yet to be done.
Okay. Understood.
Anything for the good of the order?
No, I'm, I move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.